Good evening and welcome to our joint meeting of the Kingsburg-
Kingsburg City Council-
Board of Directors and the City Council-
Public Finance Authority-
And Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. The council chambers is open to the public at 100% capacity. Tonight is Wednesday, June 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Tonight, we have our invocation by Pastor Pete Corrine of New Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome Pastor, if you can join me in standing.
Father, you are merciful and gracious and have given us such a wonderful place to grow our kids and live our life and do our work in this town of Kingsburg, Father. We ask you, Lord God, that you would bless our efforts as a community, Lord. Bless the efforts of this council and help us, Father, to do the right thing at all times, to know the will of God and to follow your will. God, I pray that you would lead and direct our council with wisdom and guidance in their hearts as they make decisions for our community. We pray for each of those council members and their families to watch over them and protect them and watch over our city and protect our city. Thank you, Father, for keeping our city safe these many, many years and continue to do so. We ask you, Father God, for your protection over not only this city, Father, but the cities of our towns, our county, our country, and this nation, Father. We ask you, Father God, that you would bless us now as we go into this service of this community, Lord, and this night, Father God, that you would be with us. And we give you all the praise for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I would like to call to order and do roll call for this meeting, which is the joint meeting of the Kingsburg City Council, the Board of Directors of the City of Council Public Finance Authority, and the Board of Directors and Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. During the joint meeting, the members of the Kingsburg City Council will concurrently- while concurrently sitting as members of the Board of Directors of the City of Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Forcato?
Here.
Councilmember Oliver?
Here.
Councilmember Prusell Jr.?
Here.
Councilmember Roman?
Here.
Mayor North?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, on item number two, we will open for public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council and the respective Board of Directors on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. We do have a timer up here that you will hear it sound when your time is ending. And just as a reminder, that we are not allowed to respond. Do we have anyone here that is for public comment for any item that is not on our agenda tonight? Come on up to the speaker and state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
I didn't do it. My name is Michael Brewer, I am a resident and a lot of folks already know me. So, I'm gonna jump into this. On May 31st, we were given a demonstration as to why declaring June as Pride Month is a necessary message that no matter how deep your pockets, how loud you get or how old you are, you do not get to determine who does or does not belong in our beloved city of Kingsburg. Immediately following a 20-minute public speech by the Constitutionalists for California that simultaneously substantiated the facts that I brought to the council and misrepresented them, an associate among them declared the LGBTQIA+ community an abomination. The far-right organization acknowledged the increased violent victimization experienced by the LGBTQI+ community, but then attributed that violence to aliens, for all we know, as if violent victimization only counts from sources they deem valid. 12 murdered transgender Americans were also substantiated, but 12 transgender Americans was deemed low enough to be acceptable, much like the way 19 children and two teachers at an elementary school have been deemed acceptable, pro-life. Am I right? The factually deficient organization asserted lifesaving care isn't lifesaving if it is merely preventing the suicide of American youths struggling to fit into a world where they are told time and again they're abominations. 20 minutes, they stood here and opined on the audacity of one resident standing up and saying, "Hey, here's a problem, but here's a significant solution that could do something." They all but said, "Because we showed up last year, we were loud, we were intimidating, we win, case closed." If that was the case, the segregation era that many of them enjoyed as children would be present in America today. White supremacy is more than wearing a white hood, bringing a cross, or saying the N-word. It is gathering with a hate group with whom they would partner again that same holiday season and an angry mob to enforce a narrow, bigoted view on the whole of our community. Literal fascism, it's not hyperbole, it's fascism. At some point, change is inevitable. And while I wish I had 20 minutes to break down the fallacies of their argument or school them in the 1946 introduction of the word homosexual to the Bible and its 1971 retraction by the same translating body, I don't have that time and this isn't the place. Neither is this about a flag. T-Mobile took care of that already, thank you. This is about sending a clear message that we don't view our residents as abominations, regardless of their gender, orientation, identity, race, religion, or creed. It is simply not acceptable. And as long as we fly the Swedish flag outside the city hall, uplifting one cultural influence into the spotlight, the argument that we don't shine a spotlight on some and not others is a lie at best. And as for any that suggests we ought to accept the answer no and calling to attention the public, to the attention of the public, the humanity of the dehumanized, woe to you, O Pharisees and scribes, I can also quote scripture. Finally, what took them four people in 20 minutes I have now done in less than five? Do not let those who would associate openly with designated hate groups to be our voice, please. For the good and confidence of our whole community, consider June as Pride Month. Thank you.
Michael, can I read your shirt? I couldn't see it before that. Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for public comment that is not on the agenda? Hearing that, I will close public comment and move on to item number three. This is to approve our joint meeting agenda. Action by the council and respective boards of directors to approve the joint meeting agenda or to make modification items that can be added to the joint meeting agenda is constrained by state law. So, I will need a motion to approve the joint agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is presentations and tonight we have none. So, we will move on to item number five. This is the joint meeting consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on the consent calendar and they will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital readings of ordinances by titles only and adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports to be approved by city council. So, tonight we have 5.1, 5.2, 5.3 to approve the City of Kingsburg COVID-19 Prevention Plan, 5.4, Resolution 2022-040, 5.5, accepting the infrastructure improvements to Track 6306, 5.6, SB 1 Resolution Fiscal Year 2022-23, 5.7, authorize city manager to execute Amendment Number 1 of Agreement CDVG-CV 1939-2. And do I do this next one separate? And then 5.8, approval of Kingsburg Redevelopment Successor Agency Minutes, and 5.9, approval of Kingsburg Finance Authority Minutes. Are there any council members or anyone that would like any of these items pulled?
No.
Then I will need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, regular calendar. 6.1, public hearings for competitive housing allocations for residential development 2022. Staff report prepared by Community Development Director Holly Owens and our sponsor is Community Development Department. So, the first thing that we will have to do is open the public hearing. And B is our presentation by our Community Development Director Holly Owen.
Good evening, Mayor North and city council members. Holly Owen and the Community Development Director for the city. We're here tonight to consider awarding competitive allocations for residential development for the year 2022. Just as a summary of this process, it began with a growth management system that was enacted and voted on by the citizens in November 2004. This was brought about by concerns regarding unplanned and uncoordinated growth in the city. The growth management system allows for 115 annual housing unit allocations to be made available at the beginning of each calendar year with a potential two rounds of applications for allocation units per year. On February 2nd of this year, the council opened up the allocation process. This is an action that needs to be taken for allocations to be considered. And on May 12th, 2022, at a regularly scheduled meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and adopted Resolution 2022-01 recommending the award of housing allocation units for the two proposed projects that submitted applications and were ranked and rated by city staff. These two projects are the 63-lot single-family development for West Star Construction and the 51-single-family development from Bonadelli Homes. Both of these are in the North Kingsburg specific plan area. They'll be processed as planned unit developments. And they were rated and ranked according to a number of factors. This is in your staff report. The land upon which each project will be constructed does need to be annexed into the city of Kingsburg through the Fresno-Lafco process. And the allocation is really just the first step in a longer process to review and condition the track maps that will accompany them. The allocation award does not constitute approval of the proposed projects or lessen the need to obtain all the required land use requirements and additionally, the environmental assessments for each proposed project. This concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, please, I'm here to answer them. And the attached information will give you further background in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council discussion. Have any council questions or discussions on this item? I have a question. Is it like Phase 4 and 5? Is that what this is over in the current area?
There is a Phase 5 that is proposed by West Star Construction. The applicants are both here in the audience tonight. If you have any specific questions that you want addressed. But the Bonadelli project is just to the north of that.
So, it's on the same side of the road?
It's on the same side of the road, yes. Further north, just one parcel further north. They both will need to come in for annexation concurrently, so.
Yeah, you said the Bonadelli tract is 114 houses?
No, no, it's 51.
51, okay.
So, the total amount is 114.
Okay.
So, that's 51 and 63 together. Two different, two different projects.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. Alex, do we know how many homes have been built here in Kingsburg in the last like two years? Approximately?
What do you think, Alex?
Well, the first phase of the West Star track was 60. The second phase is 59 or 60. The Century Communities track that's currently being built on 10th Avenue is 64. And the Summerlin track, the majority of those are into Larry County, but I think the totality of all of those phases when completed will be roughly 150.
Just like maybe as a statement and some background, and I know Holly touched on this, but for the public, it looks like we're building a lot right now. But I remember, because in 2004 is when I was building, and that is when the city of Kingsburg, the citizens of Kingsburg wanted to do something about growth. So, it went to the voters. And that's when we came up with the growth management system. So, these allocations per year is something that our constituents voted on and have set. So, it's something that we're just making sure that it matches, like these checklists that we're supposed to check and that we are allocating it and giving it to them. So, what it appears like is we're doing a lot extra right now, but some of these housing tracts have had their allocations for 15 years? Is that fair to say, Alex? Like, some of them have had it that long?
None of the tracks that I just mentioned, but there are tracks that are not in development that were approved roughly 15 years ago.
That still have allocation.
Received their entitlements, correct.
So, it's because of things like annexation that take at least two years and all of these hoops that you have to jump through with county or wherever, we're seeing a lot of this come to fruition at the same time where we didn't have that growth for a long time. But it is still the managed growth and it's something that we're tasked with because it was voted on by our constituents. Would that be fair to say?
That would be fair to say. It would also be fair to say that council could decide, for instance, next year, not to issue any allocations. That it's always a determination, there's a process and there is an opening of that, of that, the beginning of that process that's in our municipal code. And that, at that time, the council can choose whether or not they want to issue allocations for that year or not.
And they accumulate too, right? So, that's why there could be a higher number one year than the years before because we have the three years, right? So, that's another good call-up too, is the education on it, but also, you know, we're not just like 200 or 200, right? It's, we could also have the decision, if I'm not mistaken, to not have those accumulate.
Right.
Right, so we could, is that?
It was a resolution that was passed by council in the past. That resolution-
This is an option.
Could be, could be rescinded, but at this time, there is a rolling three-year allocation. There was a time when allocations were going unasked for and it was determined that that would be an approach that was supported by the council at the time.
I've had citizens reach out to me over concerns of us being in a serious drought and adding more and more housing. And so, I've had those conversations where this was voted in by the voters for growth. Does council have the right to say no based on things like that? Or would that be something that would have to go back to voters to say, "We need to like have less of an allocation"?
There is an environmental document that's prepared, a sequoque document that is prepared for each project. And within that, within that document, environmental assessments are made. And it is police and fire, traffic and circulation, school impacts, biology. A number of categories are considered and one of them is hydrology and water quality. So, that is where, that's where an opportunity to assess, you know, any concerns about water would be addressed, at least from an environmental perspective.
So, part of the process is making sure that we do have enough water to sustain those new homes?
That would be part of the analysis that would be done before we could, we could give that, give that entitlement. Yes.
Even though that's, the title is given, the council still has a right to deny the allocation.
You will, a track map will come before you and it's a public hearing and the environmental document will be circulated beforehand. So, there'll be plenty of time for public input and for questions to be answered at that point, yes.
So, essentially, this is the first step of a couple more.
This is the very first step of a longer process.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other council discussion before I open it up to public? Okay. We will close council discussion. And is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? I'll open public comment on this item.
I have a question for this, but I do have a question for this.
Yeah, could you state your name, please, and address? Thank you. Oh, sorry. That was the old days.
When they do the water analysis, what do they analyze? Do they analyze water pressure? Because we own a house over on 19th as a rental and my renters state that their water pressure's gone down since Summerlin subdivision's gone in there. I don't know if it's true, but that's what they say.
Do they analyze water pressure? David, would you want to?
The Water Board requires a calculation for every subdivision that comes in. We have to show that we have the groundwater supply to serve those new homes.
Does this mean there's enough water for them to take a shower? Or is the shower the same good shower?
Well, water pressure, water pressure and water supply are different. The water pressure, somebody can dress with public works director by just adjusting some of the parameters in the system. If you have a low pressure, just adjust.
And then, what do they do about schools? Like, how are they calculating how soon we need another school in this town? That's my other question.
I can answer that question.
I will not, I will have my blanket in your way if you wish to take off.
So, I know, like, my other job is a principal and we have empty classrooms. And so, I know for us, new housing, specifically affordable new housing for young families because that's who brings us kids, is very welcome right now because we have empty classrooms at every school that we could fill. More, more kids means more teachers, means more money for our schools. And so, right now, there's not an issue with needing another school. I currently at Washington have three or four empty classrooms. So, yeah, I mean, I'll fill them up because now we have TK coming. But that's just my school and I know there's more at the others, so.
Just so you know, the school district is always on the list for circulation for any environmental document. And they are, they are, we do request that anybody that is, wants to can issue a public comment or written comment on their particular, from their particular jurisdiction's perspective, so.
Anyone else that has public comment on this item before I close public comment? I will close public comment and I will bring it back to council discussion. Any other questions or concerns? We do have the developers here, any questions of them? Yes?
No, good, thank you.
Then I will, I will close the public hearing. And item H that we have before us, if we choose to, is to choose to adopt Resolution 2022-035, approving the City of Kingsburg 2022-2023 fiscal year. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Adopt Resolution 2022-034, awarding of 114 housing units as the 2022 housing unit allocation. So, if there's no more discussion and this is what we'll want to do, I will need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.2, public hearing for fiscal year 2022-2023 budget review to consider the 22-23 fiscal year recommended executive budget. The sponsor is our city manager's office. I'm going to open the public hearing. Our presentation is by city manager Alexander Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. In accordance with the city charter, Section 2.08.090 Sub G, please find the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2023 operating and capital improvement budget. This is the major policy document for the city for the coming year. It is based upon the strategic planning principles as adopted by council, which are to ensure financial stability, improve public safety, provide recreation opportunities for all ages, improve community communication, increase retail opportunities, and promote sustainable development. The financials were presented in their entirety during the May 31st, 2022, regular council meeting. The complete document included tonight includes narrative additions that help shape the development of the document and tell the story of budgeting needs, including a letter from the city manager, Kingsburg demographic and cultural information, five-year strategic plan and performance measurement program, the CalPERS employee pension information, our financial policies, and a glossary. We're pleased to present the document which includes the financing authority, which is our borrowing agency, and redevelopment successor agency budgets. The fiscal year 23 all funds budget is approximately $31.6 million, a 19% increase over fiscal year 22. This increase can be attributed to the return of normal programming after two years of imposed or mandated or self-imposed reductions in forecasting COVID-19 impacts. We are projecting that our 7.1 2023 all funds budget will be 9.55% higher when compared to the anticipated 7.1 22 fund balance. The budget also includes nearly $10 million for 57 capital improvement projects, including $3.2 million for the installation of a fiber optic broadband network citywide. An adopted budget marks the end of an annual process of evaluating the city's fiscal health, community priorities, infrastructure needs, and daily operations. The city remains fiscally sound thanks to prudent and conservative planning by the city council. As such, the fiscal year 23 budget is structurally balanced and there's no expected uses of reserve funds to cover any deficits. The budget maintains or increases city staffing levels, includes funding for our successful public-private partnership programs, and continues to address infrastructure needs and quality of life improvements for all residents. I want to give a special thank you to the city's finance director, Alma Colado, administrative services director, Christina Windover, city clerk, Abigail Palsgard, and all staff who were part of preparing our fiscal year 23 budget. So, our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2022-035, approving the City of Kingsburg's fiscal year 23 budget, including the Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and Kingsburg Redevelopment Successor Agency budgets. So, that concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have regards to the budget.
Thank you. Any council discussion on this item?
I just wanted to say thank you because I know that there's a lot of hard work that goes into especially that, you know, the pretty stuff in the front of the budget. Budgets are super intriguing to some people, but you make it very user-friendly and understandable for the community, specifically all the metrics- Um, specifically all the metrics that talk about how many jobs were created, how many small businesses opened within the past year post-COVID, right? And all of the, the growth and positive things that we're seeing. So I really appreciate that, um, all the graphs and, and that make this more accessible for our community if they do decide to look, and I hope they do. But I know that that takes a lot of work on top of already having to do all the numbers. So I really appreciate it.
I wanted to piggyback on what council member Hurtado said and I talked a little to, um, our city manager about it. It, like, it's not a boring document. You told the story of our town. Like when you read through it, it really tells the story of Kingsburg. And, um, Alex, like your letter in the beginning, um, was very well done. And when you, you read through it, it's, I mean, it was a pleasure to read through this and thank you for your hard work on it.
And you've done that for a while, but I really felt like we should call that out this time.
And being so supportive, um, where we're in a much better place than most of the surrounding communities. Other council?
Just real quick on that, it, it's pretty and that's great, but the thing.
It's council member Purcell keeping it.
It's, it's, it's a sound document. I mean, that's really what matters is the numbers. And I think that that's years of planning that have gotten us to that point. So that's, that's really what I'm appreciative of, the fact that we have money. It's, uh, it's good and that's years of you guys doing that for sure. So, thank you.
It wasn't pretty, though. The, the citizens wouldn't be able to understand said sound numbers, um, which is huge. Yeah, we are in a really great spot for, and that's why I mentioned, right? Post-COVID, um, when I read that number of businesses that had opened this, this year and the growth that we're gonna continue to see with jobs being created, it's just, it's awesome. So, yes, that's why they always get their awards. Yes, yes.
I saw too, like, change, they're in the pretty part to changes that might need to be made. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this early. Um, we're not doing the Harvest Moon Festival anymore. It's crayfish. So I don't know if that's something we'd wanna change. It's on local events, page eleven and page. It says page eleven and page twenty-one, that they're right next to our, the Kingsburg Traditions and then the local events. Maybe just if that's changed out to the crayfish. Cause I think that was changed and then, um, I also saw that it was the ladies' night out. I think that has changed to like a holiday shopping night or something, if that's important. Those were two things I noticed. Um, one other thing that I had mentioned, we have a lot of parks and rec money that we need to consider spending.
Call up.
We have, uh, just over two million dollars in three funds, so.
Heritage Park needs a shade cover.
And maybe like we can talk about a million dollars towards like the foundation of the sports complex. We have, I was looking at, um, page one fifty-four, one fifty-five, and one forty-eight. And between those, we have over two million dollars. And so like heritage shade cover, cover, part of that will go towards the bathrooms at Athwong. But there's no reason we can't put some more money towards that sports complex that our, our, um, city desperately needs where may, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it or if we talk about it later on to like earmark some of that money to be serious about this and, and get moving. I was, I was not aware that we had that much money in those three accounts, so.
I think that amount of money would help towards a sports complex, but that'll probably get us foundational start capital fund raising towards that.
That's what my thinking was.
Start what, I'm sorry?
We need millions to even start that fundraising.
Like fundraising? Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Got it.
I do know that in the impact fees, we had, um, one point six six million, but I do think we have to pay some of that back to green cloth, right?
Yeah, correct. So, yeah, all those funds are derived from impact fees from eligible projects. So most of the housing, um, pays into that unless they actually develop a park. But most of the time what we do is collect the fees upfront to ensure that they build the actual facility. And then once the facility is accepted by us, then we can, uh, we do a, a cost accounting there and then we return those, some of those dollars. So that's correct.
So for instance, the new subdivision that, or newer that I'm in chose not to put a park, so they put money towards green space somewhere in Kingsburg for the community.
Correct.
So I just wanna maybe put that in your ear and start that conversation that maybe we can bring that back to council in the next, maybe month or two. Any other council discussion before I open it to the public?
There's lots of stuff to consider about.
Yes. Fiber?
Fiber is point two. I know we're not all over yet, not all the way there yet with it. We still have to work through a lot, but that is a very large ambitious project that could pretty much change the whole town in a positive direction. So thank you for all the work you put in on that.
It'll help make internet affordable to every resident. High speed.
Reliable.
Reliable. Okay, so if there's no more council discussion, I'm going to open this item up to public comment. Do we have any public comment on our budget? Come on, it's good stuff.
Don't all come running at once.
Good stuff. Okay.
So, my floor is still resident, haven't changed it in like two minutes. Question, cause you mentioned about the parks and recs and I know some weeks ago we talked about a dog park, um, it, cause everyone gets up in arms if you show up with your dog at their park, cause they're like, oh my gosh, it's gonna poop everywhere. Um, is that something that's still moving forward or being considered, especially if we have all this extra money and we're gonna put him next to the highway? You know, something to really get that place looking good that I would love to take my dog to you?
So we, yeah, we re, we received a grant from the state of California. Um, we had put in for several different parks in town, including the sports complex, many other parks and the dog park. I don't think we thought we'd get the dog park one, but we were one of very few recipients in the state of California and they picked that spot and I don't recall how many millions, two?
One point two.
One point two million dollars for that area, so it'll be transformed. I wonder if they picked it because it's right off the freeway and very visible and will probably be assigned, but it, it'll be nice. And the Community Services Commission is, um, helping with that. It'll come to council, but they're helping to plan that. Um, I can let you know when the meetings are if you're interested in. So that's not even included in this amount of money?
Oh, wonderful.
Completely a grant.
Good question. Any other questions about the budget? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and then continued council discussion. Any council discussion on this? No? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And now item H, um, that we have before us is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three five approving the city of Kingsburg twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget, including the Kingsburg Police Public Finance Authority and Successor Agency as a Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency budget. So if we wanna do that, I will need a motion.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good job on it. Item six point three, uh, public hearing, landscaping and lighting assessment district number ninety-three dash zero one, consider approval of engineer's report and levy and collection of assessments within such district for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Staff report prepared by, uh, finance director Alma Collado. And our sponsor is the finance department. I will open the public hearing and our presentation is by our finance director Alma Collado.
Good evening, Mayor Nord and City Council. The Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two authorized cities to impose assessments on benefited properties to finance, um, construction of street landscaping, street lighting, traffic signals, parks, sidewalk repairs, and recreation improvements, as well as maintain, maintenance and servicing of any of these improvements within the public places within our boundaries of the district. The engineering firm of Weldon Financial Services has prepared and filed the clerk, with the clerk, the annual engineer's report that has reviewed all the maintenance costs and administration and overhead collections in maintaining the district. The total levy is a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and three for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars more, um, from the current fiscal year. And, um, the public hearing notice was, was published in the Salma Kingsburg Enterprise Record, recorded on June first, twenty twenty-two. And our recommended action from staff to city council tonight is to conduct the public hearing, to receive public testimony in regard to the proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three assessments, and to, following the hearing, take action to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three-six, or in the levy and collection of assessments within the city's landscaping and lighting assessment district. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
A council discussion on this item? Okay, then I will open it for public comment. Is there any public comment on this discussion or on this agenda items? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Continued council discussion? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Then, um, item H will be, um. Item H will be, um, to. Adopt the, would it be to adopt a resolution or to do the? Oh, that's the one that changed? Okay. It will be to adopt, um, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three-six, approving, um, the engineer's report for the assessment district nine, nine-three dash zero one and the levy collection of assessment within the such district for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and confirming the diagrams and the assessment pursuant to the provisions of part two of division fifteen of the California Streets and Highway Code and provide, uh, provided by article, um, is that thirteen? D of the California Constitution. So I will need a motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we are on to item, um, six, six point four. And it's the compute, community facilities district, twenty seventeen dash zero one, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three levy, staff report prepared by city manager Alexandra Henderson. And the presentation is by Valerie, um, Merklin, Senior Associate at DTA.
Valerie, can you guys hear us?
She's on the phone.
Just one second, Valerie, I'm gonna turn up the volume. Sorry, can you hear us? Yeah, can hear you. Can you guys follow me?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you so much for having us. Uh, my name's Valerie Merklin. I'm the associate of DTA. Uh, joining me online also is Graham Fraser, also, uh, associate of DTA and also is preparing your levy estimation for CFD, um, on the end of the now. Uh, we have a standard, uh, every summer we prepare, uh, the levy requirement and submitted to the counties and the tax control. The rates are outlined there and, uh, these are staff support. The rate and method of enforcement that was part of the formation of this CFD lays out exactly, um, which you can increase per year. There we go. Um, we, uh, the rate method of enforcement for your particular CFD, uh, the maximum will be a four percent or, uh, CPI, um, the increase in the CPI. We, for that, uh, whichever one is greater, and in this case, uh, CPI is greater this year. We do use, because if you're using quotation, we do the legend rate, which, um, let's both never refer to as the HLE CPI, uh, it's kind of the opposite of those differences. So on your screen, it looks like the maximum rate for this year for both November and December two. Total levy, uh, expected from these three, it'll be, uh, max, uh, the properties that are in that. We have added some more after split up with getting, um, all of those permit data. We pull that together, it's total levy is expected to be a hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And that's the maximum, uh, that you could choose if you, if the levy, um, if the levy left is covered. So, um, but that is how we got that. Do you know if you have any questions?
Council discussion?
Good, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, uh, pre-trad forward, um, pre-trad forward calculation of just increased to the fees and the levies expected to, but the additional.
So this levy helps, uh, our police, fire, ambulance, emergency responses in parks, right?
Yes, uh, so this is for, um, all new development that we have. So everything since two thousand seventeen, um, is required, is conditioned to participate in the CFD. So, uh, what you, what the council just previously, uh, passed was a landscape and lighting, um, levy, which is a little bit, I guess it's a little bit more of an antiquated version of community facilities districts because they only pay for landscape and lighting. Um, and so, uh, most communities are going towards CFDs so that they can help pay for act, you know, other actual services that are impacted by new development, uh, because oftentimes, uh, because of proposition thirteen in California, property taxes do not keep pace with, uh, costs associated with, uh, police, fire, uh, the other things that we're talking about. So, uh, this is every year as part of our budget process, you have to adopt, uh, the new levy, uh, and then portions of these funds that we collect are then transferred to, uh, the police department's budget, so far as fire budget and, uh, other ancillary services. And so, um, as, as there's more housing and as they come on each year, cause it's, it's dependent upon when they pull the actual permit as to whether or not we actually collect from them. And so, um, that's, that's what this, uh, this particular levy is for. So this is mostly procedural.
So is this for the existing CFDs also or just the new ones?
Yeah, so we, um, the way that the CFD works is that there is basically, we have two zones, but they're all essentially the same. So if you're, the reason we have two zones is because of, uh, the Tulare County development. So the Tulare County development, because we do not get that full amount of property tax, their amount is higher. So if you look at that, um, shot in front of you, you'll see the top version. Um, so for the single-family residential property, those are the amounts that you would pay if you, uh, purchase a home in Fresno County. if you purchase a home in Fresno County, actually get the full property tax amount. And then the amount below is for any of the homes in Tulare County. And so, and then also, there is a Fresno County portion of that Summerlin project because we wanted them to be equitable, that they get charged as well, but there's a very, there's very few of them. So again, something that you guys look at each year, and then if there's a new development, so for example, you guys just, you know, approve some allocations, but if that eventually gets to the point where we issue building permits for those houses, they would be conditioned to join the CFD as well, and they would be paying the same rates or the rates that are in play when those homes get built.
If one of us lived in this district, is it a conflict of interest to be up here voting on it?
No, because you're one of numerous people who live within the district.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. For tax zone one, that's everything post-two thousand seventeen in Fresno County. Is that correct?
Yes, except for a handful of the of the Fresno County properties that are associated with the Summerlin development.
Five houses.
And those six houses, whatever it is, are considered in tax zone two, or those are separate?
They're in tax zone two. So they, every, so every home in that development pays the same assessment amount, whether you're on the Fresno County side or the Tulare County side. And that was done intentionally so that there wouldn't be differences, since they're paying for the same, I mean, this paying for the maintenance of that park. And the reason that that one is higher is because the city is maintaining more amenities because it's in Tulare County as well. So we're actually maintaining all those things over there as opposed to, you know, there's some differences with within Fresno County.
I think people don't understand that those that are in Tulare County are not going to get annexed into the city, correct? Because it's a separate county.
They cannot, no.
I think that's that's a common misconception that we have with Summerlin.
Right.
Is it they're in the city, or is they are not?
Right. But they also are because of, you know, because of, from, and from a practical, you know, purpose, though, if you are calling, you know, and need a police officer, you know, we we have an agreement with Tulare County that we're going to be the responding department. So that's part of the reason that they're paying that fee as well, is because otherwise we would not be able to capture those dollars, because we don't collect property taxes.
So then the question would be then, why those five or six that are in Fresno County? Like, why are we treating them like Tulare County resident? Like, do you see what I mean? It's like almost double.
Yeah, I mean, because it's because the portion of police and fire is a smaller portion, so they have to pay for all those roads and everything else and and the park that's over there as well. So they're all benefact benefiting members in that subdivision. And so that was the decision that was made at that time, is that they would pay the same amount that the members, you know, so potentially you could have people living across the street from one another, paying different amounts, and they're in the same subdivision.
I think they were made aware of that when they purchased them, that these were associated. Well, it wasn't a secret.
They're supposed to.
It wasn't a secret.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
But they're not, we'll hold them. That's that's their ethical dilemma. But this is not a secret. This is not something that's new that we're just imposing on them, correct?
The only reason I knew it when I moved in my development was because I'm on city council. I don't think that that's being told to residents. I'm a family member that's closing in Summerlin, and I don't think that's been told. I think it's an important thing that needs to be told.
It should be part of the disclosures from the developer and from, I mean, I...
And your financing institution.
I was gonna say, you know, it's difficult because, you know, if you've ever, if you're purchasing a home, you're signing lots of documents, but I'm sure that one, yeah, one of those documents are this disclosure.
I've owned a home outside of this and inside of this, and it's a significant property tax difference. But it's part of when we're building and we're adding, that we're making sure that we're taking care of our infrastructure.
I was just about to say that, too. To tie it back to what we were talking about before with the housing allocations and how many per year and growth. It always makes me feel better because I'm on the city council, I knew about those impact fees, knowing, okay, cool, well, those folks are almost like paying their, you know, a little extra to be able to be a part of this environment.
And it stays there.
Right, so it's not like we're just growing and not, you know, but...
And the money stays there, correct?
Stays within the, so we have separate funds set up, and so, you know, some of some of the funds get, might get transferred interfund. So for example, if we if we get to a point where there's enough collections that, you know, we'll hire another officer or something like that, or a portion of this. So the way that the amount was calculated was based upon some assumptions of of our costs, and so that's part of the levy. There has to be a nexus. It's not a, it's not just us grabbing a number. And so some funds will 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 get transferred if they're paying for personnel or something like that, just so that's just, you know, more for our for our financials. But for example, we're going to be responsible for doing those, repairing those streets and redoing those alleys and things like that. So what we've sort of created is what we call sort of like a drop account, so that there are portions of that that will stay in that fund until such a time that we have to repair them, and so then we're not having to grab from other funds, because ultimately, you know, one of the conversations that we had around two thousand seventeen was whether or not the city was going to continue to require the installation of alleys, because we don't have a funding mechanism to repair those alleys without something like this, because alleys are not, they don't count for like vehicle miles and our gas tax and things like that. So when we collect those dollars, those are for for the road repairs, and so to continue to ask developers, I mean, developers will put it in, but then we're putting ourselves in a difficult position to not be able to maintain them in the long term, but this is an avenue for that.
It's smart. It's not fun paying, but it's it's smart for our city. Any other council question or discussion? No? Okay. Item RC is to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-zero-three-seven, the resolution of the city council of the city of Kingsburg, acting in the capacity as a legislative body of the community facilities district, number twenty-seventeen dash one, public service district, authorizing the levy of a special tax for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, if that's where we want to move.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six point five. GAN limit adoption for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget figures, staff report prepared by finance director Alma Colado, and presentation by finance director Alma Colado.
Mayor North and council members, each year, the city council must approve a resolution to adopt the GAN limit for the city for the new fiscal year budget figures.
Goodbye.
Using the county or city growth percentage for calculations. The statutes regarding the adoption of the GAN appropriation limit are contained in the government code, section seventy-nine-ten. The adoption of the limit must be by resolution prior to the fiscal year in question, and Prop one-eleven requires a recorded vote of the council regarding which of the annual adjustments factors should be chosen, city growth or county growth. Once the limit is adopted, the public has forty-five days from the effective date of the resolution to challenge the calculation. If there is no protest within forty-five days, the resolution is automatically passed. We have the choice of using the city growth percentage or county growth percentage for the calculation. The city growth percentage is negative point twenty-two percent, and the county percentage is point nineteen percent. The larger the percentage, give us a higher limit. For the figures below, I have used the county growth percentage. And the financial impact that results from the disaction is that the appropriation to limitation is below the established GAN limit. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-three-eight, approving the GAN calculation for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, using the Fresno County growth percentage. This concludes my report.
Any council discussion on this item?
Yeah, you said there, it's from the Fresno County growth?
Yes.
You know, Kingsburg growth? Okay.
Don't, because ours is negative twenty-two growth.
Okay, that's the only question I...
I don't know who did that count. Any other council discussion or questions? No? Okay, so then, C is to, if we choose to, adopt resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-three-eight for the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three GAN limit. So if we want to proceed, I'll need a motion.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six point six, and I believe this is why we have a lot of public here. So before I read this part, I just wanted to say one thing. When items like this come to us, this is the first time we get to see it and we get to discuss it as a council. So it's brought to us because it's been brought up by the public several different times. That's why it's coming before us to discuss. We're here to listen. There's been no decisions made. We want to hear from everybody here who's here to talk. So I just wanted to put that out before we get into this. Six point six, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-two, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Kingsburg, temporary temporarily placing a moratorium on the issuance of land use entitlements and permits which allow professional or commercial offices to locate within the central commercial district along Draper Street from Lincoln Street to California Street. Staff report by community development director Holly Owen, and presentation by community development director Holly Owen.
Good evening, Mayor North and city council members and members of the public. We're here tonight to consider the adoption of an ordinance, number twenty-two-two oh-two, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Kingsburg, temporarily placing a moratorium on the issuance of land use entitlements and permits which allow professional or commercial offices to locate within the central commercial district along Draper Street from Lincoln Street to California Street. Recently, there's been an increase in the number of retail spaces in the downtown area along Draper Street which have been converted to commercial and business back office space as opposed to customer-serving space. Managing order fulfillment, distribution, and shipping are examples of back office uses. While undefined office uses aren't allowed use in Form Base Code three area along Draper Street from Lincoln Street to California Street, the underlying zoning is central commercial, which identifies commercial offices as a permitted use. While there are a number of existing offices uses along Draper Street that serve the public, recent sharp upturn in these back office uses have caused a noticeable shortage of on-street customer parking for existing customer-serving businesses along Draper Street. The zoning code and the Form Base Code are clear in the intent that the central commercial district is to concentrate businesses in areas of the central commercial zone district for the convenience of the public. And the purpose of the Form Base Code, C-three district, is to reinforce and enhance the walkable urban downtown, and they enable it to evolve into a neighborhood that provides commercial, retail, and entertainment uses, civic and public uses, as well as a variety of urban housing choices. With the assistance of the Fresno County Council of Governments, the Community Development Department is in the process of evaluating the city zoning code in order to propose various revisions to the code regarding permitted uses, uses allowed within administrative approval and conditional uses within a zone district. One proposed provision to the zoning code would be to limit professional office and commercials office uses along Draper Street in order to promote retail uses along Draper Street and to achieve a better balance of retail, office, and other uses in the commercial, central commercial zone district. This urgency ordinance is, will give consultants and staff the time to research and gather comments from the public and draft proposed language for council consideration. It will terminate forty-five days after the date of adoption, which would be tonight, should you choose to adopt it. The recommended action by city council is that they adopt urgency ordinance number twenty-two-two oh-two, placing a moratorium on the issuance of land use entitlements and permits which allow professional or commercial offices to locate within the central commercial district along Draper Street from Lincoln Street to California Street. The ordinance is attached for your for your review, and I wanted to just call out a couple of items in, several items in section two that may be of concern or interest to to those who would be affected by this. The businesses that are already operating with a valid City of Kingsburg business license that has been issued prior to the date of this ordinance may continue to operate outside those limitations as they would be considered legal non-conforming uses. Additionally, if a property owner is leasing space to a professional or commercial office on this date, and then the leased space becomes vacant while the urgency ordinance is in effect, the property owner will be allowed to continue to lease the space to another professional or commercial office as a legal non-conforming use is during the term of that urgency ordinance. This is concludes my staff report. I know that the city attorney has been involved in crafting this ordinance, and you can direct questions either to him or to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion?
I'd like to hear from the public.
I was about to say the same thing. Do you want to open it to the public first? Okay. So what we will do is we will start from the back row in hearing from the public, and then we'll move each row forward, and if you can come up to the microphone and state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg, and you're welcome to also say if you're a business or a building owner. So we have anybody at the, in the very back row? Sure? Okay, how about the second row from the back? State your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
I'm Sherman Dix. I am a resident of Kingsburg and own a building on Draper Street. And I do have issues with this proposed ordinance. Number one, I think what I have the most concern about is that this is an urgency ordinance, kind of, so in the code for ordinances or the way to change this, you know, zoning for the city, urgency ordinance is allowed when there's a threat to health and safety, and I really don't see how this current situation is a threat. In the staff report, it was mentioning the sales tax that is being lost. I think that's happening now, so I don't understand how putting this in place will change that immediately. So I don't think it's appropriate. I am for encouraging, incentivizing, doing what we can to bring as much retail to Draper. But I I'm opposed to the city limiting the zoning or the permitted uses for landlords to do that. I think there's other ways to do that. I think you might get some unintended consequences for that when you limit the flexibility for the landlord to decide, you know, the tenant mix for the building. I think maybe encouragement to bring that retail. For instance, my building is a deep building, you know, and it fronts Draper, so office may work in the back, may, you know, I think there's a lot of buildings like that on Draper based on the map that you showed, so I think having that flexibility for the landlord to decide that mix, you know, is something that's important. Also, I don't think it addresses the root problem. I think the retail will show up naturally downtown if there's more foot traffic, you know, maybe improving the parking situation. So just limiting it to retail doesn't mean you're going to get quality retailers. I've seen a lot of turnover in the retail tenants that have located downtown. And, you know, I think the number one retail use that succeeds is a restaurant, and part of that problem is the expense of converting these older buildings to be up to code for that particular use. That's why the city council put in place, you know, a loan program to pay for fire sprinkler retrofits, ADA retrofits. Those are the type of things that I think will really incentivize and bring retail downtown, and I know it has because you see the Cossaros Building is a recipient of that, and you're going to get two restaurants out of that. So doing more of that, I think, would be, have more of an impact than, you know, putting restrictions on land... putting restrictions on landlords that may not make sense. I certainly would rather have an office space that has a front and is bringing people to the downtown than a vacancy. Sorry, I got some notes here. I think too, you know, my big problem on this urgency ordinance, even though I support this cause to bring retail, is where's the collaborative process with the building owners downtown? You know, I understand some landlords are absentee and some are more participatory. I certainly am one that's going to participate in those conversations, and this is the first that I've heard about it. So I'm a little offended by that approach to say this is urgent, this is an emergency when there hasn't been outreach, some type of workshop to maybe address that. I think that's the point of the zoning ordinance, which says you're going to go through public meetings. You're going to have this public input to determine, you know, what is best for the city, you know, for all the stakeholders. So I think that the proposal is, we're going to put this in place, we're going to lock it down. I don't like the fact that this can be extended, you know, without public input for up to two years, and then we're going to have a discussion. I would say, hey, let's move forward with the discussion, but through the normal process.
So can I just clarify? So you would be in favor of moving forward in the public hearing, but not the 45-day?
Absolutely, yeah. With the collaborative process, it's going to say, well, what is the actual, what should be done here? You know, should it be that we are going to try to require certain business hours? I don't know that that's a possibility, but certainly parking limitations, you know, a two-hour parking, you know, that's something I know, being a building owner, I would be for. And I think that encourages retail use because it's not going to be appealing maybe to an office property owner, especially one that maybe they're buying it for themselves and they want to park right out front. And, you know, five of their employees park out front and they don't care about opening up spaces for retail use. You know, I think those are the type of things that I would be interested in. That, and, you know, if the city wants to encourage retail, you know, don't put it on the backs of the landlords, let's do it together. Like with the loan program, if you truly believe it's going to bring so much revenue to the city that it's going to save lives, right, provide more for safety, then use that to incentivize either the retailer or the landlord to put a retail use in that space. That's the problem is the office tenants are there, ready to pay, right? And the retail tenants aren't. Otherwise, you'd have retail tenants down here. So you've got to kind of balance that, you know, that situation. And that's where those incentives come in. And that's why, you know, you see a building like Bank of America not sitting empty, right? They're getting money to assist with, you know, it makes it more economic for that landlord to rehab that building and put uses in immediately versus some of the vacancies we've seen ongoing for years and years. Now would be my concern is that you're going to have some landlords that just say, "I've owned this forever, I'll just sit on it." You know, they don't, you know, they may not capitulate based on just this zoning change. I think it needs to be collaborative and it needs to bring them to the table. So that's where I see that other process working better. I mean, and then we have a recession on the horizon, you know. I mean, we just came out of a pandemic. There's a recession that's on the horizon, and you're going to restrict landlords' ability to put tenants in those buildings. I mean, we may experience several retail tenants go out of business, but office is there. Or maybe vice versa, we don't know. But not having that flexibility as a landlord is, you know, something that, yeah, unnerving to me. And I've seen retail tenants that aren't any better at promoting retail downtown than an office space. You know, I have office use that one time, I mean, they had, because they're busy, you know, before the pandemic, they were open more hours than some of the retail tenants because it's not a hobby. You know, we have a lot of hobby retail businesses in town where they want to be closed on the weekends or Tuesday night early. So just being retail doesn't necessarily mean it's going to bring that retail environment that we're thinking about. Probably over my time limit, I'm guessing, but... So that's just, I just think this is the wrong process. You know, I think it's good intention, but I would rather see, move forward with bringing the stakeholders to the table to discuss what can be done. I think there's, everybody has the same goal, but just this wouldn't sit well with me, so.
I have a question, Sherman, only because I'm not a building owner.
Yeah.
Are there any reasons that a building owner would pick office space over retail?
Absolutely. I mean, I think they're going to pay higher rent, they may have better financials. You know, just, I mean, we had a candy shop that was open for three, four months and never even had an interior, you know. I mean, I wished them all the luck, but I could tell immediately they weren't going to survive because it takes a lot of money. Have tenant improvements, you know, you have to have a business plan. Office tenants generally, for one, it's a lower threshold of what they need to do to succeed. They're usually a business that is already successful. So when they come to the table, they're going to be in a better financial situation. It's a lot less costly for the landlord. There's none of the fire sprinkler issues, there's not the tenant improvement intensity that you see with the retail use. So that's why I say you've got to balance that out. If a retail tenant that's equal, you know, it's going to be easy. You'd rather have that retail tenant, it brings more people. You know, retail by far would generate, you know, the rent is just an inflection of the amount of revenue a space can make. Well, a retail tenant that's successful, like a Corso's, they can make a lot, you know. But an office is limited. So I think they want retail. It's got to be a quality tenant. It's got to be a use that's going to stick around because the last thing a landlord wants to do is finance the improvements that are expensive and not have somebody there. So I think that's where a lot of the problem is.
What kind of city incentives would be attractive to a business owner to consider retail over office space?
Just like those ones I'm talking about, you know, more maybe towards those improvements. You know, the facade improvement program is a good one. But even to, it doesn't necessarily have to be to the landlord. It could be for, you know, tenants, right? It could be for particular uses. Then that's going to bring those tenants downtown, it makes that decision for them. I mean, the smarter business owners too are going to look and say, "Does this make financial sense for me to open up my store there?" And that's going to be based on how much traffic, potential sales. So there's a reason that's there. You know, some of the other things that could be done, you know, through the chamber, maybe more events or Thursday, Friday nights, you know, off weeks. I just, it's not just the fact that you're able to put an office tenant there that's causing it. It's that there's just not the demand for retail tenant. Our rents potential here is lower than what it could be just because of the traffic and the nature of where things are now. That could change. I mean, that's the other thing, it seems a little hasty when T-Mobile's just opened. I think that's going to drive a lot of activity downtown, just natural, all these new houses. So those things are probably coming. I think whatever's happened with this one particular tenant or two particular tenants really sticks out because, you know, the mindset is, hey, here's all this activity coming in and we want to save it for retail. I don't know that that will necessarily do it, so. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else in the same row as Sherman? Okay, the next row in front of him?
Put it back and forth.
I think there's three of them. Good evening, if you can state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg?
Ned Akers, Kingsburg resident. And I just had a couple of questions. My first City Council meeting ever, so.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome.
I just wanted to know, who was it that, you said, presented this proposal? This whole idea of a moratorium? I wanted to get where that came from.
We had some residents or a resident that had brought it up at public comment. A business owner? We've had many over, I've only been on council for six years and I've heard it three times. I know that also got brought up from the California, right, City Planners Association, correct, Alex?
Yeah, I mean, I think the Planners Association in 2017 had a handful of recommendations. I know, yeah, the Economic Development Committee discussed it a couple of weeks ago, and then that's why there's a, you know, discussion on it tonight at the council.
And what was the purpose of this proposal from their point of view? I mean, how was it, I mean, people don't just like want to do something just to do it. What was their objective for wanting to bring that to Kingsburg and wanting to change our downtown? I mean, that's to anybody. I mean, why would somebody who's outside of Kingsburg want to come in and change how we look or how our businesses are?
From what I understood from the public comment, and then from also listening at the Economic Development Meeting, it wasn't people from outside of Kingsburg. It was people and business, the resident that spoke is a business owner on Draper. And our Economic Development Director also has a list of retailers that do want to come into Draper Street. And what we have seen recently is when a space comes open, like we don't even know it's released, it all of a sudden, like the building owner has somebody in there, which is their right to do, and it's become office space where there are retailers that do want to come on Draper Street, come to our Main Street. Our Main Street has been thriving in the last five or six years. I mean, people say it's like a little homeward town, right? Especially during the holidays.
I just moved here three years ago, so I really love it.
It's beautiful.
Wanted to try and get involved in something, you know, and I heard about this and I thought, well, shoot, you know. We, in my personal opinion, is we don't have enough, we have maybe enough things to buy stuff at, but like what we had at the park the other day with those food trucks. We need more events and venues, places where people can get out and mingle and get to know each other. And to me, that kind of supersedes even retail, but more event places would be better.
But it also drives people downtown, like they come and shop, so.
Yeah, that's just.
So I believe it was.
Between the business retail and the, you know, foods and whatnot, but I think we need venues.
Thank you, Ned. Next in that same row? If you can state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Steve Sepharjan. I have a business at 1515 Draper Street. I've lived in Kingsburger for 68 years. A little background, I had a Draper Street business for over 32 years. I'm an office tenant on Draper Street, as well as a property owner on Draper Street. I've been Chair of the Kingsburg City Economic Committee for over 25 years and Vice Chair of the Bid Business Improvement District. Past Board Member of the Kingsburg Chamber of Commerce and served for 12 years as a president. I felt like I've been fairly active in Kingsburg. The Economic Development Committee has been working for decades to establish a welcoming and tourism atmosphere in our downtown quarter. I've always felt like the mix of retail, restaurant, and offices has made for a healthy downtown. However, in the real estate business, I've seen the trend for office space accelerate, especially in the last six months or even year. We've watched key locations such as Merritt Window Fashion's building and the Kimberley's Flooring become office space. And I have a list of others that are looking for office space in our downtown core. We have a downtown property, as, we have downtown property owners, many of them absentee, not willing to invest in the ambiance of downtown Kingsburg. Office space is in demand, and trust me, it's a lot easier than being a landlord of a restaurant. I personally, RPS Real Estate, would be more than happy to move out of the area that we're talking about, because my office is in that, if the landlord would agree to comply with such type of an ordinance. I've given this a lot of thought over the last two weeks since I knew it was going to be, come up. And I don't have the golden answer. But I sincerely believe it's in the best interest of Kingsburg to stop, research, and look for a solution, which I don't have. The way to do that would to be to agree to this temporary moratorium. We're talking about 45 days to take a look at it and see if there is a solution to our Swedish culture, Swedish village, tourism, and to make it more convenient for residences to have things to do rather than walk-by office space. I want to thank you for your time and your service to Kingsburg. Thanks.
Hello, I am Jolene Polyak. I do the economic development for the City of Kingsburg, and I am a resident of Kingsburg. I've been doing the economic development for the city for over 20 years. One of my directives has always been tourism. The community has desired tourism for decades and has worked hard to reach the ambiance we have now. The good news is that restaurants and merchants want to locate here. The bad news is, so do office and back office businesses. Unfortunately, they can't co-locate while maintaining the ambiance and foot traffic we currently have. There needs to be a balance. The trajectory we're currently on is rapidly eroding the types of businesses that would entice tourists. We are only talking about three blocks of one street. Right now, you can see the effect of too much office space by observing the light foot traffic on the south side of Draper because of the predominance of offices, as June Hess pointed out at a previous council meeting. It doesn't matter if you're for or against an ordinance that would protect our tourism goals. What matters is that we have the opportunity to have a community-wide conversation about where we go from here, given the trajectory that we're on. It might seem like we don't need a moratorium to have a conversation. The reason for the sense of urgency is that we have an East Coast brokerage firm that wants to locate 50 brokers on Draper Street. A deal was hours away from being solidified when the firm decided to back away. First, imagine 50 back office employees on Draper, generating no foot traffic or sales tax. Then imagine all the parking spaces their cars would take up. If they re-enter talks, this deal could still happen. Hence the need for a temporary moratorium. Malls have rules for types of businesses that can locate on their property. You don't see office-type businesses in a successful mall. The three blocks of Draper is Kingsburg's mall. When CPAT, the planners, were here, they recommended zoning that would protect Draper Street from what is happening right now. And only on Draper, currently, I have five office-type businesses that want to be on Draper and only on Draper. I have five office-type businesses, let's see, I also have several retail and restaurant businesses that want to be on Draper. There are three properties that will have space available soon. All three have been contacted by office-type businesses interested in their space. So to recap, there is a solid sense of urgency for a 45-day moratorium. During that time, the community can discuss Draper's future one way or the other. Tonight, it is about creating the time for thoughtfulness and determining what our downtown's future will be.
Jolene, how many, you said several retail, do you have a number?
I have five, five retail, and when I say retail, it's retail and restaurants.
So five office and five retail that want downtown?
Let's see, yeah, I counted them before. Yes, I have five office and I have five, well, I have several retail and restaurants. I have actually more than five.
And you have three spots that you know of?
That are coming up. And they've all been contacted by office. And we just, you know, it just, it keeps going. It's south, the south part of Draper, we're seeing it now where, you know, you can stand there and you can watch the traffic flow of Draper and see that just nothing is happening on the blocks that are heavy office. And I'm not opposed to office at all. I mean, it's vibrant, it's important, you want to have that type of vibe, but I mean, it's at the expense of retail and foot traffic. I mean, we've just, we've just started a bid, a Business Improvement District. It took us years to get that. That was one of the primary reasons to bring foot traffic. And then at the same time, we're losing the reasons why people would have foot traffic on Draper. You know, in your budget, you just approved advertising on highway. You know, we, in your budget, you just approved advertising on, on highway. And why would we have that if it just continues to go this way? It's just, it's accelerated. It's, we've always just sort of thought, well, you know, it's a good mix. It's, it's no longer really a good mix. It's, it's really leaning heavily on office. And the sense of urgency is to just take a breath and, and reflect on where we want to be. Maybe the council wants it, you know what, we're fine with this, let's just let it be office. And that, and that, it would at least be a thoughtful, strategic decision versus, versus it happening because we didn't do anything.
We also did wayfinding signs based on that and then the signage and everything. So we did follow what they were asking of us. And then this was just another piece of that. But if we're asking everybody to come to the downtown area and then we're all just office space, that's a problem.
And it isn't even all, it's just mostly, you know, I mean, we're tipping, we're tipping right now, which is why this is an urgency. Well, one side of the seat, and I haven't really calculated, but I know we're, we're very heavy on office. And it's, at some point, the people aren't going to want to come off. They're going to come off and they're going to say, well, you know, I guess we could eat, check out a block or two, and then we have to leave. And, you know, we just did the parking where we have, you know, the opportunity to have the charging stations so that we can have people come out and, you know, have things to do. We're doing all these things for tourism and this really is a major piece of that puzzle that needs to be addressed.
Are you at liberty to say where that East Coast firm was going to go into?
No. And it could still, it could still happen. It's not done. I mean, they backed out, but it's, it's, you know, they could want to come back in. Or somebody else, yeah? And we have no teeth, we have no way of stopping it.
I have a question about the, you said you have five retail and restaurants and three spots, it sounds like?
And what?
You said you have, you're going to have three spots available?
Uh, three spots that are coming up that are going to be available, yeah.
So I guess my question is those five retail and restaurants, why, why are they not here? Why are they not beating out the office spaces, in your opinion?
Beating out the office spaces? Because I, I, well, it's because it's really the, the, the decision of the landlord. And like Sherman said, you know, it's easier to rent to an office than it is to rent to a restaurant or maybe even a retailer. And that may be the case, you know, but I, and I'm sure there's an answer to this if we just collaboratively talked about, you know, what the tactics are. I don't have the tactics, I don't have this idea. And I, I value property rights. But I also value the right of us to have our Kingsburg, Draper Street, three-block mall that, that we can pull people in, because people love it here and they, they will continue to come if there's something for them to do while they're here.
Those three spots that are coming up, are they permitted for retail or they office commercial right now?
They're all had retail or will, will have had retail before they come up.
So they're not?
They're not currently professional.
So the 45-day would stand?
Yes, yes. And that's what I'm saying, there is an urgency. I understand they're thinking, oh, well, why, why, why an urgency? Why can't we just do this? Right? That's why. Because we really are trying to not lose any more ground than we've already lost without at least having a conversation, a community-wide conversation where it includes everybody. I mean, the community is involved, the, you know, government's involved, the property owners and the businesses are involved. I think it should be a community-wide discussion and we just, we need time to be able to think it through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in that row? The next row? June in Leslie's room?
Good evening, I'm Leslie Carpenter. I am a resident of Kingsburg and I am a tenant, a very grateful tenant, and because my landowner values what I do. Tired, sorry guys. Okay. Good evening, Mayor North and Councilmen. My name is Leslie Carpenter, business owner of Berman's Flowers. I am also the Chairperson of the Business Improvement District here in Kingsburg. The Business Improvement District is new and we are trying to represent equally retail, professional, and entertainment aspects of our district. And our district is pretty much right there. So this is pretty near and dear to us. We fought for, gosh, 15-plus years to get a district to promote downtown, to promote entertainment, to promote retail, to promote a hallmark city where people wanted to come. People want to come on Saturdays, people want to come on Sundays, they want to come late on Thursday nights, have a drink, stroll. Even if our businesses aren't open, they're going to walk our streets and they're going to come back to shop, because there's always pretty windows to look in. I do understand property owners, that they are just trying to make a living too and that nobody should have the right to tell them who they can rent to or how they can rent their property or if they want to leave it sit empty for 20 years. That is their right, because this is America. But I would love for us to all sit down, have a conversation, and come up with a compromise. There has to be a compromise that this city prospers and continues to be a little bit better than most other little cities. Because everybody's like, oh, you live in Kingsburg? That's amazing. Your kids are so lucky. And I'm like, yeah, they are. And I don't want that to go away. I do support this pause for one reason, because it's a pause. It's not a done deal, it's not a, we're going to tell you, you can't do this for the rest of your life. It's a pause, so that we can gather all the tools and make the best decision to see what Kingsburg is going to look like in the next 20 or 30 years. It's not about what we're doing right now, it's about what we're leaving for the next generation. You all know that I'm a really big advocate for young entrepreneurship. Can we develop some kind of partnership with these business and property owners to invest in young entrepreneurship? There are a million things that we could sit down and talk about, and I just want us to take the time to sit down and talk about it. I'm going to apologize for offending any property owners tonight for my opinion. I have no intention of doing that. I am going to apologize to any tenants that think that I'm not standing up for them tonight. I am. I just want to see us make the best decision. Good luck, you guys.
Okay, Leslie, you?
I am June Hess and I am a resident. And I have had my business for 36 years. And I can remember years ago, we all knew that Kingsburg was not a destination town. We knew it was on the way to somewhere else. And people would stop here to use the restroom or get, grab a cup of coffee. But I have to tell you, this town is a destination town. Now, I have people almost every day coming into my store that say, yeah, we're meeting so-and-so that's coming from the north and somebody's coming from the south and we're meeting in Kingsburg. So we're going to spend the day in Kingsburg and we're going to eat and shop. And so, we are a very unique town. We're not a cookie cutter town like all the other towns in the valley. We are unique and we need to keep our uniqueness. I have no problem with an office on Draper Street if it has walk-in traffic. If it does not have walk-in traffic, there's no reason for it to be on Draper Street. It could be on a side street or someplace else. So I just want to encourage you all to do the right thing and we need to preserve the uniqueness of our town.
Is there anyone else in that row? Okay, then we'll move to the row in front of June. State your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
I'm Robert Ellinger, yes, I'm a resident. I want to be the bad guy. So my family owns the top left corner of Draper Street, 1363 to 1309, and a couple commercial buildings on Marion Street. And we're the landlords that try and be conscientious of what we put in our commercial buildings. We always try and aim for retail, restaurants, and services. But it just really irritates me that somebody in this town, and I would assume it would be the council if you vote, would try and tell me who I can rent to. I worked hard for my money, I worked hard to buy my properties, and that property is what sustains my living, my retirement, my kid's education, and everything else. And you're telling me I have to put a less-than-desirable renter into that if it comes down to it? Retail has higher turnover, retail cannot afford some of the rents that people are charging. We all know that Kimbleys recently was advertising their rent for that building was over $4,000 a month. I find it hard to believe that a retail beginning a store could afford over $4,000 a month and be able to sustain in this small town and sell enough to make a profit and stay open. And I love Steve and I love Jolene and I think Alex is the best city manager we've ever had, but I don't want to be told by any part of government what to do with my property. And I rent to, I, I follow all the rules right now of what you guys are asking, but no, I don't want people telling me what I can and can't do. Because retail is the worst renters. They drop their leases, they do property damage when they come in and change everything, and then they bail. And Jolene said herself right now that the three buildings coming up to be open were former retail. So that just means that retail's leaving. I'm glad more retail's coming in, but then also the problem I have is that the buildings that we have, we have one that's like 4,000 square feet next to one that's 300 square feet. It's hard to find retail to fit a 4,000-square-foot building. And it's also hard to find retail to fit a 300-square-foot building. So it, that'd make it even worse for you to push on me. Retail's doing horrible right now. Everybody's buying on Amazon, every single one of you is buying on Amazon. I'm sure every one of you had a package delivered this week from Amazon, especially you. Right? Right? I mean, all of our businesses bring foot traffic. Our businesses, our services, all bring foot traffic. And I hate to say it, but even those 50 people would bring foot traffic. You know, people come in and get their hair done. What do women do after they get their hair done? They go shopping. What do people do after they eat at a restaurant? They go shopping. So it can't be necessarily forced that every store be retail. There's dark spots on Kingsburg Draper Street that need to be fixed. I think that should be a priority. Stores that don't have any foot traffic, stores that are empty and being held hostage basically as closed on our streets. I think that stores should be encouraged to be around the corner from Draper. We could spread out our downtown a little bit. Otherwise, you're just going to get people raising their rent to $4,000 because the demand is there. My rent's nowhere near $4,000, but now that I know I can get it, the next time I have an empty, my rent's going up. You know, that's ridiculous. I'm joking, my rent's not going to go up that much. But I mean, that is ridiculous. But that's what it's going to drive. And if, if you make people turnover, if I have to cover the cost of losing money based on people dropping their lease and, you know, putting in new shelving and whatever they need for a retail, that's just crazy. We have six commercial rentals in town, three on Draper. And out of our total six, we have 20 business license. All those people pay business license in the town, we generate income. And all those 20 people shop in the town when they get done with their shifts, they go have lunch, it provides income. So I have a hard time understanding why it would be forced. And 45 days to stop it and renewable for two years? That's crazy and you can't bully one person into not renting to who they want to rent to. And you definitely can't do it for the next two years.
I have a question, Jen. Are any of your buildings two-story with office space upstairs or back office space?
We have two that have upstairs, they're used by the renters. They're not able to be separated and the owners use them for a private office. And like the one on Marion, my office, I have four within the one big building, yeah?
I think that's a consideration. We have a lot of businesses that have.
For sure, yeah.
Office space or empty spaces.
And we approached one of our service renters and asked them if they would consider renting to a business separate. They're considering it, but I mean, we've thought about that. We try and be that considerate landlord who does that. I think you need to incentivize people to do the retail, you know, offering the improvements, offering, you know, they have COVID rent release, why don't you bail out somebody who has a retail renter bail on them? Somebody in this room had a renter bail on them, told them they had some illness and they couldn't continue in their lease. There was no illness. I'm not calling anybody out, I'm just saying, that retail business went under and didn't finish their lease. That's a tough thing when you're a landlord. So, that's my piece. Thank you for your time.
Upstairs is exempt though, correct? If you were on Draper and you had an upstairs office?
My upstairs are not separate, like the apartments are not separate, no. My upstairs are within the building.
What I mean is you could have an office upstairs, meaning it wouldn't be part of this?
If it was permitted, correct? If it was already permitted, has office space?
Like how Hellblow was above, or that would still be?
I don't care what's exempt, I don't think anybody should have the right to tell me.
Michelle? Come on up and state your name and if you're a resident, business owner.
My name is Michelle Buckner. I am a resident of Kingsburg, also a business owner. I am a renter on Draper Street. I sent you guys an email. Should I re-say what I said on the email? I mean, I. Can I just do that?
Did you send it to all of us or only three of us?
I sent it to, well, I sent it to you because I spoke to you. Vince, I'm in your, my business is in your district.
I read it.
And Brandon, I'm, live in your district. So that's who I sent it to. Sorry, I'm just a little bit nervous. My concerns are, why is the city trying to orchestrate what kind of business can operate a privately-owned building and only on Draper Street? 45 days with a two-one-year extension, so it's potentially 45 days and two years. I think that's just a long time to prevent someone from renting. And I'm retail, so it, this is actually, might even benefit me, but I'm retail, but I wouldn't want to be told and I wouldn't want my landlord to be told who or what could rent. And like it was mentioned, we are, the economic times coming forward, we don't know what's happening. If you have a renter and there's something downtown, I'd rather see an office downtown rather than an empty building. We are just coming back from the pandemic, we're just coming back with retail and services and we're just getting back our income. And now, it feels like, yes, retail could be income, but it could also be no income for a building owner. If you have to, if the, if the building owner has to revamp or remodel to accommodate retail, that could be a huge expense to the building owner or the business owner. I had to build out my salon, I had to build out, the landlord didn't pay it, I paid it. But luckily, it was very simple. But what if it was more? Then the renter is going to charge more, the business owner is going to have to charge more for services, the consumer's going to have to pay more for the services that are on Draper Street when you can probably get those services somewhere else for a lower cost. It's all about cost and where is the cost, who's going to incur that cost? It's going to ultimately go to the consumer. Well, there are some people who think Draper Street is too expensive anyway. Yes, it's a boutique and it's great to shop, but at some point, we are going to outprice ourselves. And then, it would seem to me that Draper will be even more empty. I just feel like the cost of doing business is already high enough. The cost of supplies and all that, the cost of building out your space is high enough and it feels like this would just cause more costs. And a few years ago, when I first came to Kingsburg, when I first opened my business, I was hearing all of you wanting, pleading to have people come and rent space downtown. It didn't, you guys didn't specify what. We just, there was empty buildings and you, we wanted renters. Now we have renters. And now you're saying you don't want those renters because they're office. So what happens in five years or two years when, oh, now we have too much restaurants? Now we have too much hair salons? Now we have too much? You're, you're telling me us, we have too much of one thing now, what's to say we're not going to, you're not going to say we have too much of something else? And then, it just seems like a cycle of the city council or the city proposing things. And then it just seems like a cycle of the city council or the city proposing things that are a hindrance to the building owner. So, that's my piece. Thank you.
The next row? Last chance before I move to the front row. Nope. Front row? You shook your head no.
Michael Brewer, still a resident from the last couple of times. Uh, it seems like you, on both sides, have some severely like valid points. The folks you've had come up today, um, me as, as a resident, as someone who likes to hang out down on Draper, that likes to find things for my family to do in town instead of driving up to Fresno or going down to Hamford or Visalia or whatever, is, this kind of stuff is interesting and important. My wife and I have walked down Draper Street many times and noticed the number of businesses and we're like, why isn't there more retail for us to do? But seeing the other side of the argument, that makes sense i- i- where they're coming from. So it seems like a pause at least for the forty-five days for everyone to get together, do that collaborative work, do the research to see what would be the best middle ground is something that would be beneficial for not only the city, but for your property owners and the renters. It would be great to see a bookshop downtown or cigar shop downtown or whatever vice I've got going, you know, that week downtown. However, you know, I'm just one person. But there is, there was that important point of what happens in the future. Right now, economy sucks. Um, inflation is real, gas prices, I mean, we're all suffering. And so, I get that. So what, when we get through this hump, what is gonna keep us sustained? What's gonna keep people coming in? Kingsburg is very unique. You know, when you compare it to all the other little towns around here, there's just something a little extra pristine about Kingsburg. There's something that glimmers, that wants you to pull off the, the freeway and check it out. You're not some kitschy truck stop with like a really terrible theme, um, like I've seen in, um, South Carolina. You guys have value, you know, bringing people here. I remember the, a discussion about a dog park and you talked about wanting parks that draw people to the town to come hang out at our parks and go do our, our, you know, go do shopping downtown, bring more money into the city. This seems like there's an opportunity if you all work together through this, understanding the various hurdles that we have. I'm just a nobody, right? I'm not important. I like to think I am, but I'm not. Um, but I do shop here and I would much rather spend a little extra money supporting a local business than going elsewhere. And unfortunately, there's a lot of stuff that we have to do elsewhere because there's very little options here. Um, so maybe that pause is a good idea, not as a strike to one side or another, but to collaborate. Um, and, and Mr. Fantastic. I've never thought from that perspective, so I really appreciate what you brought forth. So that's just my two cents and you can take it for what it's worth. It's not gonna get you any gas, but there you go.
Thank you. Okay, I went through each row. Anybody else have anything to add to the conversation? I'm gonna close, um, public Turn it off. I have a teacher voice. Okay, so I'm gonna now close public comment and I'm gonna open it up to council discussion. Um, who wants to start?
Brandon, can you give, can you give me a tally? I feel like you were keeping track of what we heard. He always keeps track. Just to, just to start the conversation.
It, it's pretty close, actually.
Have you included the emails and messages?
Pretty heavy, uh, opposed. As far as my very unofficial per cell poll, it's, uh, opposed.
Who wants to go first?
I would, I would sort of agree with that in the fact that the government overreach opposing in us telling business owners what to do, but not the fact that we need to do something as a group to look at what we need to do because almost everyone that I talked to, even that was opposed, whether it was multiple business owners, had the pleasure to go to Chamber yesterday and got to talk to them, multiple other, um, building owners, um, almost every single one of the ones that I talked to were not in favor of that, but they were in favor of doing something. So like not fully opposed of Yeah, of this.
Building owners, um, that were, um, not for it as well, but wanted to do something, like incentives for instance. But once you start talking to them, they understand, you don't wanna do something, understand that something has to be done in some sort. They understand that what we're trying to do, um, they don't wanna see downtown to be nothing but office space either. But I think Sherman hit it on the head too, where, you know, where you have a choice. I was talking to one, building owner when they were saying that if they have a choice between renting to office space or retail, they're always gonna go with office space. Well, that's a concern where, you know, you look at our south side where it's all office space and we don't want our downtown area to be office space, you know, and like Jolene said too, where, you know, we're trying to promote our downtown area and if we're promoting our downtown area and people come and it's nothing but office space, what's the point of coming to us? Um, if we're gonna be putting in charging stations downtown, we want people to stop, charge their car and then you want them to eat and shop in our downtown area, you know, spend some time down here and there's nothing to do. You know, we're not gonna have that. Um, so I think that there has to be a discussion with everybody. I think we can, you know, one thing we're always good about in Kingsburg is working together to come up with a res- a solution, which I think we can do. Come up with something together.
Can, can I go? Okay, so, um, I have a couple of questions. Um, so to Jolene's comments about, why there's a sense of urgency, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, what I need clarification on in order to help me make the best decision tonight is when it comes to specifically like Jen's businesses, right? Uh, she mentioned, um, that they're all full. You have tenants right now. And if one of those were to drop tomorrow, right, she would have an open and empty spot and we have this moratorium done tomorrow, effective tomorrow. Would she be able to rent to an office space tomorrow? So like because she's an existing owner and already had that in place before? Does that make sense?
Yep. So the proposal tonight is, is that if you have an existing office space and that tenant leaves, you could rent to another office space. So the, the, the focus of the or- of the urgency ordinance is to limit the conversion of existing retail space. Let's just use Kimble's for an example, to a professional office space. So it would not require an existing office that went out to then convert to retail or restaurant. It would, that is not how the ordinance reads.
That was one of my, I guess, burning questions because how would it affect people that are already in, um, their business or own their businesses now? Um, okay, and then when it comes to, um, the pain point. So I know that we've talked a lot about parking downtown and so we want people to come and wanna do the thing. Uh, we want them to shop with us, um, but then there's nowhere for them to park. Um, and so that does happen because of the office spaces that we have. Um, sometimes we park in the front, sit there and we leave the car there all day. Um, if we do something um, like this, or we don't do something like this tonight, is there some sort of urgency then on the other side when it comes particularly, particularly to parking, um, and like enforcing that? Because that's a pain point. Like that's something that's, we've talked about for a really long time. We want foot traffic, we want the thing, but if the traffic does not flow, then they're gonna keep their car parked there all day. So I guess what I'm saying is, tonight, if this doesn't happen, which we don't know yet, but can we get promises on the other side that we'll do something about that pain point? That's just one specific pain point.
Talking about the parking specifically?
Like enforcement, because you can tell people, you can only park there for twenty minutes, but what does that look like? People aren't gonna like that either. But there's gonna always be things people don't.
They've tried. I know the chamber's even done a good job getting it out, you know, to try that way and, I mean, you're not gonna have our law enforcement. They're not gonna be That's gonna, it's not gonna be enforced. That's the tough part.
And, and we do have an actively, like we are working on that parking plan. So that's already in the works. I'm not saying that it's something we have to create, right? Um, it's gone through the committees, but that's just another thing that sticks out to me. Um, but yes, we, um, also when it comes to, I'm just, I'm just listing off things that I heard tonight because I came in quite literally just going, I don't know what to do. And so I'm glad and I'm thankful for all the comments because as Michael mentioned, every person was very specific as to their reasons. Um, and I don't want anybody telling me what I can and cannot do either, so I get it. Um, when it comes to the, um, when it comes to the, the point about ordering online and, or have we ordered from Amazon this week? Yes, you know, we do that. But everybody's looking, I think, for different things when they come into downtown. Um, for example, when I go into June's store, I'm looking for something Keeswick specific or Honey, right? Something I'm not gonna get on Amazon. Um, and so for, from personal experience, I've ordered online with downtown businesses. So if we allow the opportunity for more retail to come in, um, by placing a brief pause, will we maybe get to see the same opportunity of ordering online with a downtown business? Do you know what I mean? Like that option, does it not exist? It can't exist. Um, so I'm still a little torn on a decision. But I wanna hear your thoughts from the council as well because we know, which is sometimes, like we sit in all of the economic development, all of the planning, all of the business improvement, like different boards and things. And this was brought up by a business owner, I heard, right? Six or seven or something? Um, so that makes me feel better because for me, I was like, where did this come from? So now that I have backgrounds and I hope that the public hears that too, is that it was a recommendation by an outside source, but it was a, it was being asked by local people, right? Um, so that's all I have. I don't have a decision. I just thought I'd voice a couple of those things. Who's next?
I'll go next. Um, well, I don't shop on Amazon. If I don't, if I can't touch it and see it and feel it before I buy it, I don't buy it. Anyways, um, if, you know, I think if, if we do approve this tonight, this moratorium, um, cause everybody's made a lot of valid points, every speaker tonight. It doesn't mean that we're gonna, you know, adopt something like this continually, you know, cause, cause, you know, I, I can, you know, I, I don't like people telling me what to do either, you know, with, with my things, my possessions, um. But, like I said, everybody has valid points and I think, I know that I have seen a lot of businesses on the south side. And it seems like that there is, there, they do need some more retail there. So I just wanna let the business owners know that if, if we do adopt this resolution tonight, this, uh, ordinance, urgency ordinance, you know, we would, the business owners need to sit down with staff, city staff and council, we need to figure out what we're gonna do here in Kingsburg, you know, uh. And, uh, there's, there's no easy, easy answer here right now.
I piggyback off what you said.
Yeah, sure.
I think there's a very important call out when you, what you said, you don't want anybody to tell you what to do. And I know people are gonna laugh at me for saying that. But I think that's what we need to remove from this equation, is that it is so much of, um, what, what we're honestly used to right now. And in, if we just bring it into the perspective of what we're doing here, it's not that we're trying to overstep. It's just a pain point and we wanna see if it'll work. It's like, we're gonna go on a quick little date and if it doesn't work out, we're gonna break up. Like it's not dramatic, but it is dramatic because that's how it can be conceived of like, no, I'm not, my rights are being stomped on. We don't want that for them either. So I think that, to your point, that perception of like, shoot, like they're telling me what to do, I wouldn't want it to be taken that way. Um, and I just think that's important for us to separate, cause I know that's not what any of you guys wanna do, right?
I would piggyback on what you said and maybe disagree a little bit because if I was one of those three retail, like those three stores that had retail businesses that went out of business, I don't know who they are. I don't know if the, the, the building owners are here tonight. Hopefully they are. Um, that's forty-five days that I'm not collecting rent.
That's true.
And so we're telling them, put retail in there or your business stays empty.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So, like just a different perspective? That's where we, we're in a unique position, which, um, we do get to tell them what to do.
Right.
And I personally don't like being in this position, like having to make that decision because I don't wanna tell business owners what to do. I, I don't wanna have that right to tell them. I wouldn't want somebody to have the right to tell me what to do if I owned a business. But we've all here, our city, the chamber, have worked tirelessly for this downtown to be the way it is because it was not like this. Even maybe five years ago. Thinking about like listening to everybody and, you know, I know I had a lot of public input before tonight, but I was coming to listen with an open mind here, but also thinking like COVID's not gone. I just came back from COVID. Like it's not gone and I hope we never have a close down, but when we did, all retail was done. Businesses got like office space, like I want retail here. I want it to be thriving downtown, but those owners of the businesses that had office space still could collect rent because they could still do their job. Where retail, I, I don't know if they got bailouts. I don't know what happened. Right now, it looks like things are thriving, but we know there's a downturn coming. So one of the points that I believe it was Michelle might have made was, like we were begging for people to rent, like for buildings to be full. I don't remember how many years ago Jolene could pop, I don't know, like there were empty buildings here. We were trying to get buildings that had been empty for twenty-five years, like to figure out what to do with, or a building. And now we have them full. I don't know.
Yeah.
What you see is us having a conversation because we haven't been able to This is like real life here and trying to help because we need to do something. We definitely need to do something. The question is, what is the right thing to do? And I'm not sure, personally, I'm not sure that the forty-five days is the right thing. I do believe having the public hearing, if the building owners will actually show up, I don't know If the building owners will actually show up, I don't know if the ones that we're talking about are even here tonight. So I don't know who they are. If they show up and have input and are part of that process, I think that would be important if we do that in July. Um. The thing that makes me nervous about the forty-five is. I don't want it to be just a pathway to kick it down the road, like for us to be like, oh, we got the forty-five. Oh, now we, we're gonna say we're still working on it, now it's another year, now we're still working on it when we're really not doing. A whole lot. Like, I don't want that to happen, so that's just kinda.
Couple things. I'm a little bit more black and white about it, um. I, I agree with Mr. Sepharjan and Ms. Hess a hundred percent with what we need. Absolutely. I would love to see downtown be all retail services with some offices here and there and balanced. I'm just not willing to. Do this on the backs of the owners. I think that. I'm gonna refer to it as. An infringement of their property rights, but it's really, it's, it's whether we wanna call it a pause, whether we wanna call it anything else. It's a reduction of their property rights, which I take above. What we're trying to do, which is protect the branding of our town. And I. As much as I would, I'll do anything we can within our rights to incentivize, to help protect the brand of our town. To make it more retail if it's possible, make it more. Appealing for those services. But I'm not willing to say that this is an urgency ordinance, I, I mean, when I go back and look at what this urgency ordinance is there for. It's, I don't know that this is the spirit of what that's there for, it says that it's to protect public safety, health and welfare of Kingsburg. I don't think that this applies to that in just my. Very narrow minded opinion. Because. I think these are in place for things that are truly public safety. These, this is for truly the well-being of the town, not a want, so for us to infringe on those rights. For a want is just a slippery slope with government that I can't support. I think that. We're saying that it's a temporary. But a temporary infringement on rights is still an infringement on the rights. And if there's a reason for it, if we had to. Stop things downtown because there is a true public safety issue, I'm all for it, I'll be the first one to stand up here and say. We are taking away your property rights, we are evacuating you from your home, there is a fire, there is a flood, that's what this is for. And I have a hard time saying that, hey, I'm gonna take away some of your property rights. Because I don't like the way that you're gonna run your business, maybe in the future. Now. For me, it's gonna be. Spoiler alert, a hard no on this. But. I wanna move forward with the conversation, cause I think what's important about this is that we're starting the conversation on how to fix this in the long term. And I wanna continue with that conversation. I just don't wanna use the mechanism of an urgency ordinance to do it. I don't feel like that's right. Um. So let's move forward with the conversations about parking, I talked to some owners today, walked around downtown. And. Parking is a big issue, maybe we can implement parking regulations, some stuff like that. To make it. Less appealing to these offices. And maybe more appealing to retail, three hour parking, I was gonna say two hour parking, but I was schooled today that it takes longer than that to color and cut hair. So I, I support the conversation, I wanna move forward with the conversation, I wanna do what we can, I'm just not willing to. Take away someone's property rights, that's just too important to me in my core for something like this. That's all, that's all right.
I have a question for Mike. Um. When it comes to the specifics of the urgency of the ordinance. Um, how does this? Because what I'm hearing from, from Sherman and from, um, Councilmember Purcell, is that it's. In place for specific reasons that sound like very. Um. Urgent situations, uh, so what about this allows? For us to say this is an urgent issue that we need to address? Right now? Thank you.
Does that put you in a bad spot, you won't answer?
No, no, it doesn't. The, the, the issue that we have with regards to the ordinance is that. It, looking at it from a health and safety standpoint is, I think. You, is a broader. A broader aspect than just if there's a flood or if there's a fire, or looking at the. This area as a whole, from the standpoint of. The. Welfare of the city as it relates to how this portion of, of Draper Street is going to be, excuse me. Is going to be populated from the standpoint of business. And so. Um. You know, it, it is different from saying, talking about. You know, smoke shops or something like that, I mean, that's an easier one to. To fit within the round hole, but I think from the standpoint of what we're looking at here, and again, I'm not. I'm the lawyer, I'm not taking sides one way or the other, but in support of the legal. Risk requirements that we have to be able to establish in the findings in the ordinance in order for. The council to feel comfortable. In passing it, if that's the decision that's made, we're looking at a broader aspect of welfare. Uh, from the standpoint of the community than just, you know, pigeonholing it. And so I, you know, I think that, that there's a basis upon which to, to adopt the ordinance. Ordinance based upon those. Um. Welfare and, um, aspects of it if we, if the council so chooses to do so.
Is that specifically to the loss of, of sales tax revenue that support our public safety?
That's one of the aspects of it, you know, there, that's why.
Which hasn't happened yet, though.
That's one of the broad, that's why we're looking at it, at a more broadly based review than just. Us, you know, a more simple from one from the standpoint of. Like I said, smoke shops or something of that nature.
I think my concern with that is when you say. Financial welfare, we just went through the budget where we're doing phenomenally, and that's not. To take away from. Any, any of that statement, I just feel like we are really trying to put a square peg in a round hole to get what we want. Whereas we have a process, we are the zoning commission if I'm correct, that's us. So if we wanna change the zones, let's go through the proper process. And I'm all for it. But there is, there is a process for that, and it, there is an A to Z process, and if we go through that and we get to Z and we decide that that's what we're gonna do. If you're a property owner downtown, that's the new zone, and that's how it's gonna be. And you can get mad at us for that, but there's a whole entire process that we can go through to make that happen. I just don't wanna shortcut it and say that it's urgency with it, when it's based on health and welfare financially, when we're well over our budget by. Significant amount. I don't know that we can. And I fear that as a property owner, you're gonna have a mechanism to come after the city for that. And part of my decision with this is can we defend this legally if it's come after, if, if someone comes after us? I, and I don't know, that's up to a judge, that's up to a jury. But I don't wanna be in a position to have to defend this when. I, I feel like we're really working in a gray area here.
Well, I was just gonna clarify, I mean, uh, one of the things in the, in, in the ordinance, just to, just because Mike and I had a lot of conversations about. Exactly what you're talking about is whether or not this fits and. You know, respectfully, you know, staff would not have brought this if we didn't think that it, we were able to make the findings. So it's not just the city's, uh, dollars that we're talking about, because if there is an impact on. Other retailers in the downtown, because there are professional offices that are impacting their ability to do. Do business. That's the general welfare of those business owners as well, so that was, that's a conversation that I think has stemmed from. Uh, more of the conversations with the chamber and some of those, you know, some of the, hearing some of that, uh, including their participation in the. Uh, economic development, um, committee meeting. Um. You know, staff is happy to take responsibility for, uh, bringing the urgency ordinance, um, I think the reason is, is that you heard. A lot of really good arguments on both sides tonight, and they're quite simply is not a, a straight answer. So, but I also wanna be clear that even if you adopt a forty-five day ordinance, we're not gonna figure this out in forty-five days. So. We, we, that's. A mechanism that we're required to go through if we want, if you wanna take control of. You know, what we're talking about tonight is that you have to make this finding, you have to adopt the forty-five days, you have to hold a public hearing. And then you can, you can extend that, it doesn't have to be for a year, it could be for. Two more months, three more months, six more months, it could be for, you could say, nope, we don't wanna extend it anymore. So I just, th- those are, again, we're not here to argue either side, I just want to make sure that you guys understand sort of the, the process behind how it got. You know, in front of you today, and, and I appreciate, uh, uh, Mr. Dix's comments about, uh, how be more collaborative and. Um, you know, not, we're not trying to throw this at them, um. But we, we've been having a lot of these conversations lately and sometimes it's hard to get everyone to the table. And, uh, doing something like this is, um, you know, it's not necessarily comfortable, um, which is what we can tell from having this conversation, but it also does. You know, sometimes spur some of these conversations, so I think the question for council is, it sounds like you're talking about, we've gotta do something. We've gotta look at our zoning, so the question is whether or not that conversation happens. With the moratorium or that conversation happens without it. And you just have to be comfortable that if it, you know, one, either way, right? You know, cause there's gonna be people that like it one way or the other, but that's, I mean. Staff is already engaged. Um, planners through, uh, the Fresno Cog Circuit Planning Group to start working on this zoning, so that work is gonna happen. Regardless of, um. You know, what the decision here tonight is, because we know even outside of the downtown zoning, there are. Zoning changes that we have to make to our highway commercial zone and, and it, it just. You know, it happens over time where, you know, I will tell you right now that the highway commercial zone allows blacksmiths. I don't know if we're gonna have any blacksmiths, uh, coming, right? So, you know, just as communities evolve and. You know, we change as people, then, you know, those ordinances and that, that language has to change as well, and that's just. Part of the reason why we're having this discussion tonight.
We need to make it clear too, though, like we said earlier, that if you are, if you have a current. Office space, that would not change with this.
Correct, that's correct.
But if you have an open space, it will limit who you can do business with.
But if you have an office space, you can still rent it to office space. Office space, that's different.
Talking about property rights too, you're gonna be doing something as you, as, as, uh, Councilwoman Purcell says, you're gonna be doing something with property rights. Regardless of, if it's. Adopting this ordinance tonight or looking from a, at the, at the zoning code, um, as Holly brings back. Um. Various proposals from the standpoint of revising it. Because some of those proposals may say or may restrict the ability to rent office space. In the area that we're talking about right now. And so it's sooner or later, you're going to be discussing those issues and under the police power that the council has. To regulate the real property and, and the portions of, of Fresno County that are within the city limits of the city of Kingsburg. You're gonna be addressing those issues, so if you're not comfortable about it now, you better start getting comfortable about it because you're gonna be addressing it sooner or later.
No, I'm all for addressing the zoning, but going through. The proper zoning procedures to change the zoning, that's, I guess that's my sense, not an argument with you at all, Mike.
No, no, I don't.
It's, it's the procedure of this. That I have, that I have personally have an issue with.
I.
Cause we all want the same, I think the reality is, everybody up here wants the same thing, we all want downtown to look like the Hallmark movie.
Absolutely.
There's no doubt. And we'll do everything we can to do that short of. Things that are outside the boundaries for me.
I, I, I.
Also working with, with all the owners for incentives too, finding incentives to help with that, I'm not against that. That would help.
I agree with Councilmember Purcell when it comes to like coming out of this, um, pandemic. And you, you don't wanna tell people what to do. Um. I agree with you when it comes to, wow, uh, when it comes to the process of zoning, what'd you say?
Write that down.
Everybody, write it down, guys, um, we're agreeing, so, no, I, um, seriously, I, when it comes to. Because the way that I was looking at it, Booty, we were speaking previously. Was, well, we have the whole ordinance on smoke shops or what is it cannabis, marijuana, whatever, being able to come into town, like, we're telling them what they can and cannot do. Um, that's what zoning is, right? This is residential, this is business, this is what you can and cannot do. Um, but when you laid it out in the way that you said, um, the process of that. How long, so my question is, what does that process look like if we didn't do this tonight? Cause we do have to have the uncomfortable conversation, we all know what we want to see downtown. How would that look differently than what this is? How long does that take? Cause I'm pretty sure it takes a while.
The process behind the scene isn't gonna change, uh, regardless of whether the ordinance is adopted, it's just really, you know, what happens in. You know, in real time, if there are, you know, properties that come up in this particular area that then could potentially be converted. Um, I think probably you're looking, and, and some of it just depends upon how much input there is, how much discussion the council has. Um, you're probably looking somewhere between a six and nine month timeframe to really take a look at. The zoning and talk about, you know, cause there are, you know, I mean, there are so many options, there are communities that. Um, you know, require a percentage, you know, you're, the, the front portion of it has to be some sort of foot traffic, and so that might. That might still be an office or something that drives foot traffic. And but if it's sort of a back office thing, then those are, are behind, um, and, and actually, the form-based code has some of that in it already. So we have some of that language in certain areas of the downtown where if you have a proposal, it has to be either behind a retail or commercial use or something like that. Um. So it's just. It's hard for me to pinpoint exactly how long that will take because it's, it's, it's gonna be the conversation, it's gonna be, you know, how, how quickly, you know. Staff and council decides to, to move on that.
I think where I get stuck as well is. Um, you said it before, forty-five days isn't enough time, so then, right, you would push maybe a month or two years, it could be anything in between. Um, so neither. Solution makes sense to me. Like, it's gonna take a long time, no matter what, it's just, do we put a hold on it or not? And I feel like. What's up?
Cause we gotta start someplace, I mean, when do we start to have a conversation with the building owners?
I think we've started it. I think this is a big part of that conversation.
I also think though too, when it comes to having, so it concerned me, the fifty person office, right? Um. Being used for that, but then I think about, and, and the argument being that it's going to, um. Uh, what is it? Long story short, if they were, if that business were to open like office space outside of this district, close by. That would provide foot traffic. Still to the downtown area. Fifty people, I mean, right, like, we have jobs coming in all over town, it's gonna bring people downtown, and if it's just for that specific place that we put the hold just to see. Could it potentially? Um. Keep. That from opening just in, I don't know. I'm just talking out loud, very open and honest with you guys.
I just look at it very similar to other legal processes, is there is a process. There is a due process for these owners of buildings, and I think that although this is. Somewhat of a loophole in that due process, I think they're still entitled to their due process of the full zoning requirement change, and. I don't own a building down here, wish I did, at four thousand dollars a month. I, I don't, a- and I'm not willing to. Step over their due process and have our public hearings and go through the proper zoning changes for this. Cause I think that we're, we're not saying that we're not gonna move forward, we're just saying we're not gonna circumvent it with an urgency order.
When the zoning process does start, we do public hearings within that, correct?
When the what starts, I'm sorry?
Zoning process, because.
Oh, yes.
We'll be moving towards a zoning process with different options, so there will be public hearings.
For both. Yeah. Um.
Any more council discussion?
Yes, I have a question, Alex, if, if we do adopt this ordinance. You're saying that, you know, this process is gonna. Potentially take months. So after forty-five days. Does it come in front of us again?
Yes, so if you, if you adopt it tonight, um, you're required, you know, to hold then a, either, well, if you do nothing. After forty-five days, it just expires.
Right.
So. You could adopt it, after forty-five days, it, it would expire. What we would do is set a public hearing for the July twentieth meeting, because we have some. Um. Noticing requirements and so, and then there would be a public hearing to basically continue the discussion. And, you know, hopefully come back with more of a. Firm conversation with the circuit planner group and really talk of maybe you're outlining then. Community input meetings, workshops, uh, things like that at that meeting, and then the council would have the option at that time to extend it. And they can extend it for up to ten months and fifteen days, which equates to a full year if you add the forty-five day, the original forty-five days on it. You don't have to adopt it for that long, but that's. What your options would be.
Extend it or drop it?
Essentially.
Yeah, after the forty-five.
After the forty-five days, yes.
Alex said it has to be at that next. Like Alex said, it has to be at that next hearing has to be a public hearing.
So if we don't pass this tonight, will, can we still start that conversation in July or would it start differently?
Certainly, we can still have that, um, you know, in July and, um, or, you know, what? You know, the forty-five days just puts a, you know, a firm timeframe on it, right? I mean, so it's really up to, you know, council to, you know, how often they want to continue or how soon they want to continue that conversation. But we could certainly bring it back in July twentieth, still, still have a public hearing if you so, you know, desired.
I think another important piece of this that I don't want us to walk away with not addressing specifically is the incentives and the parking. Because like if, like if approved or if not approved in the meantime, what, workshop? Because I want everybody to be at the table and it not be a shock factor, um, to the businesses. But those are two really important pieces for me, that it's like, if we're not going to do something immediately, what can we do? We do do a lot, but.
I'm just going to put up this shock factor also, I'm not going to be in favor of the forty-five day, but I am in favor of a public hearing, like, of starting that conversation and at least, like, not kicking it down the road and, and having that. So I know it has to be four out of five tonight, so.
Has to be four out of five?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it can't be three?
For urgency ordinance, it has to be.
Okay.
So.
Well, then, that answers.
So.
That answers that.
I mean, we can, we can do motions and go through that or, I don't know if we did staff a different direction or. So it is to adopt Urgency Ordinance Number Twenty, um, Twenty-two dash zero-two, placing a moratorium on the issuance of land, use entitlements and permits, which allow professional or commercial offices to locate within the, um, central commercial district along Draper Street from Lincoln Street to California Street. So that's the action before us, so if anyone wants to make a motion.
You have to take, you have to take some action, you can't.
I will make a motion to not adopt the resolution as presented in front of us.
Thank it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Now can we direct staff in, in something different?
I'd, I'd make a motion to bring it back next month and have either a to start the process of looking at, I don't want to word it.
It should be a future agenda item, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
It should be, yeah, that's what it should be, yeah.
Bring it back again, start looking at zoning.
Staff can put together sort of a, an outline of, um, I guess, options for the council at the July twentieth meeting.
So bring, so I, I would just say, you know, to bring it back, to look at the zoning and also any sort of incentives as well. So that way it's not an urgency, get worded that word, but then, um.
But it still is, right, like, there is a sense of urgency around it.
Comes back.
Yeah.
In a few weeks.
Are you looking at the same air, are we looking at the same area that's subject to this, to the urgency ordinance?
A moratorium.
It would still be the downtown.
Downtown?
Area, yeah. But then this way we can hopefully bring the property owners back and then that way we can look at any sort of incentives and things like that and zoning and. Does that help?
And I appreciate the, um, open dialogue. Um, like you said, we did not have the opportunity to talk before this, we can't talk to each other about anything that's on the agenda. So if I'm up here talking silly, it's because I honestly want opinions and input from you and I appreciate having that open dialogue. I think that's what makes us a really great council.
I think we have a lot of people that are listening right now also. If you have ideas, please, we're looking for solutions here. I think that Mr. Separgen had said, we have a problem, we're trying to go in the right direction, but we just need to find the right solution. And I think that twelve thousand people in this town, I think that there's a lot of minds out there that can come up with some pretty, pretty viable solutions for this. So reach out to us, please, our emails, phone calls, whatever, whatever it is.
And also for parking too. Yes, is another big issue, so.
We do. Which is why we have that plan, we just can't do.
Thank you for everyone tonight that spoke out tonight too, thank you.
Item six point seven, crime statistics report for the month of May twenty-two, General District Department of Labor. Crime statistics report prepared by Kingsburg Police Department Records Supervisor Marina Maria, presentation by Chief Neil Dinkins.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor North, members of the council. So as always, um, I start out with what the crime looks like. In my report, uh, we did have a considerable number of catalytic convert, converters thefts. And so that's why you'll see the graph on the thefts for part ones are up pretty significantly. So we're, you know, most state is being plagued with that problem, so, but we're working on it along with everybody else. Want to update you on a robbery we had in March at the Arco, detectives are working leads, we have suspects identified. They're from out of the area and we've been, um, to the locations where they have been. So we're making progress on that and we'll have a, some arrests and filings with the DA's office forthcoming. Update on the bank robbery, um, we do, do have the suspect in custody, no injuries where we, um, were involved. Cash was recovered, detectives are working, follow-up with cell phone extractions, evidence processing, interviews, DNA collection, et cetera. So that's a, just a, you know, arduous process for detective work, it's kind of a grind, but we're, we're moving on that one. Uh, we did have an attempt homicide last month, the son stabbed his mother. The suspect is in custody, the victim is well and back at home. Same kind of grind, uh, that I just mentioned about evidence processing, interviews, DNA collection, that type of stuff. We have experienced some graffiti along the ninety-nine corridor, a couple of times at Business Park and, uh, the Ponding Basin behind Adventist. So we're working on that to make sure that we can do some things. And I'll tell you, you know, this is not, not going to be a secret, I'm going to set surveillance cameras, uh, night with night vision capable, surveillance cameras, so that we, see if we can get an idea of who's doing this, because it's all up and down the, the Highway ninety-nine corridor, all through Fresno County and maybe beyond that, but I see it all along Fresno County, uh, the ninety-nine corridor, seems to be the, the same group or, or, or individual. No other significant crime trends or issues. Some positive news, we hired a police recruit, she will begin the academy, she started this week at the police department, she'll begin the academy in a couple of weeks on July fifth. Uh, we have another police recruit who is about one-third of her way through the police academy, she'll graduate in October. And our selective recruitment efforts continue, as you know, um, we just added two more positions in our budget, uh, this evening with your approval. So, um, I already have people in the pipeline for that. And we also have one trainee who just came off of field training, that's a four hundred hour process, so it's quite a bit of time. And two others are currently in that process. So we're moving, we're moving some bodies through our training process pretty good and we're seeing some positive results. They're going to be productive police officers. Uh, our other training plan is moving forward, all the officers attending perishable skills training this month and next and, uh, other ongoing specialty training continues to move forward. We completed billing for the Caldor Fire in Eldorado County from last year, so hopefully we'll see some, um, return on that uh, in the not-too-distant future. Uh, I did attend a web meeting with, uh, the California, the Governor's Office of Emergency Service, law enforcement branch on, uh, future operations such as the Caldor Fire and, and, you know, whatever else is going to come. Because there's, there's going to be some fires and there's going to be some civil unrest, uh, based on some things that are probably coming out of the Supreme Court and, um, other issues, so we're preparing for that. And Alma Collado, our finance director, also participated in that because it was up, both operational and billing, which is important. Um, and I want to recognize the Kingsburg Police Officers Association who participated in the law enforcement torch run, torch run to support Special Olympics, that was really nice. Uh, especially, uh, want to recognize Officer Nisi Robledo who led that effort. He did a yeoman's job, getting out there, um, getting donations, sponsoring runners. And it was a really significant event, we have, I have a whole list of people who participated from the business community as well as individual sponsors, and that was really nice. And we had, um, five runners, Sergeant Kevin Pendley, Officer, Reserve Officer Ben Fan, Officer Josh Carey, Officer Jennifer Villanueva, and I hope just four, not five. And, um, uh, really had a nice show of support from the community, so, um, tip of the hat to the Kingsburg Police Officers Association for that. That concludes my report, I am happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, um, the, there was a fundraiser, um, at Starbucks, is that the same one, for Special Olympics?
Yes.
Is that the same one, same day?
That was also involved.
Awesome, it's really great. It was really nice to go and see them there.
I just want to, uh, thank you Chief for the email you sent to your officers about, uh, if there's an active shooter, you know, uh, to engage, even if you're alone, to engage until the threat has stopped, so I appreciate you, you know. Sending that for, for our, our citizens here in Kingsburg, especially our kids.
I, I appreciate your comments, sir. Um, it has always been my philosophy that if you are armed, trained and, uh, equipped, that you're going to do your duty. Because I won't tolerate anything less. Our citizens deserve nothing less, so I appreciate that.
On the, the figure that I'm watching said, um, also, um, you know, for that last week and a half of school, I know that it helped make staff and parents feel safe and kids loved it. Your officers stayed and had lunch with them and were out at recess and, I mean, it, they didn't know why. Um, well, at my age, they didn't know why, but it was also making good connections with them and we had a lot of kids saying they want to grow up to be police officers, but for staff and the parents, it really made a difference, so thank you.
My pleasure, I, I just thought it was necessary to do that and help, uh, allay any fears that the community might have, so I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
On to, um, item number seven, seven point one, Community Services Commission, uh, we have not met.
I'm waiting for my screen to come up, it's messing up. We have not met since our last meeting.
Um, seven point three, um, Chamber of Commerce. Um, I stepped in for Councilmember Purcell and there was a lot of conversation about what we just spent an hour on. And, um, the chamber really was talking about, um, they encourage businesses, but they also advocate for building owners, so just like that balance. Um, they also really talked about the, I'm going to call it Kingsburg Street Eats, but it was Fresno Street Eats that came, um, to Kingsburg and talking about, like, Fresno Street Eats was overwhelmed. They did not expect that turnout from our town. But it was also because it was downtown because it was covered because they're not hot enough to the restaurants there, but it pushed everyone downtown, um, where a lot of the restaurants, um, in town saw new people and they said that they would be back. So, um, I wasn't able to stay for the full meeting, but the conversation was talking about having them come back. Um, I believe it's the first Friday, um, a couple of different times and, um, just looking at that partnership because it also, they do a lot of the work. I know our chamber, um, does a lot of volunteer work and the festivals and everything they put on that, they do a lot of volunteer hours. And, um, they, Fresno Street Eats really helps pick that up and a lot of the licensing with the food trucks and things like that. So, um, that was a big part of that conversation. We also had a lot of conversation about parking downtown and some ideas for that, so.
Do the Street Eats, do they donate money back?
Yes, so that's a great question. The question, um, was brought up, um, by, um, by the public who was there of how much did the chamber put out? And so their estimate was around a thousand dollars because of like renting tables and it was their first time and they felt like it was like an investment. But I believe what they said was their profit was going to be about four thousand dollars when they handled most of everything. So that's a pretty good profit and I believe I got that correct, so, um, yeah. And fireworks stuff.
Yes.
The next item is economic development.
Um, seven point five, Finance Committee. Seven point six, Planning Commission, we have not met. Seven point seven, um, SKGSA.
Uh, the meeting was canceled due to lack of business.
Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Our Business Improvement District, um, met this week and they only had one item on the agenda, which was to discuss, surprise, photos, uh, from the Swedish festival. However, their photographer for the Swedish festival was sick at the time of the Swedish festival and so they're going to be reaching out to community members for photos. Um, that was kind of the discussion, it wrapped it really quickly and ended, so that's all I have to report.
Seven point nine, Council of Governments.
We meet next week.
Seven point ten, um, Councilmember Reports, anybody?
I have one, um, Fresno State sponsored, uh, the Rural Fresno County SURF, which stands for Community Economic Resilience Fund. So I was on their Zoom, I don't know if any of you guys got invited to that. Um, so their initial planning phase for that is going to be a regional, um, planning phase for the, throughout the Fresno County, I'm sorry, the Central Valley. Uh, the party is economic development and job creation. Um, we have to apply as a region by July twenty-fifth, that's the deadline. And so the first fave is five million dollars and for the first faves and then it'll go up to five mil, five hundred million dollars split among the regions. So, um, I also brought up broadband as part of that as well and, um, they said that could be something, could be an investment into our region as well. So, uh, stay tuned for some more money for our area, so. I think that could be something that could be a good investment for our area as well. And then thank you to all the voters for, um, Measure Z passing and.
And then thank you to all the voters for Measure Z passing and a nice high number at eighty-three percent, so that was another good one, so thank you for that, for the zoo. I just have one thing to mention, on Tuesday morning at eight forty-five is the kickoff to the state shoot, if anyone wants to join me, just let me know and I'll give you that information. Seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
Just one reminder that our July sixth meeting is canceled. Traditionally dark the week of Fourth of July, that's all.
Item eight, under Future Items, we have nothing listed. Item nine, adjourn our joint meeting at the Kingsburg City Council, the Board of Directors of the City Kingsburg Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. Okay, I finally figured out this computer.
Oh, yes.
When I'm getting lost, it's because like on the item, well, on the item, thank